Good afternoon and welcome to our 1 o'clock Board of County Commissioners work session. Today we'll be discussing land acquisition discussion as well as solid waste tipping fee and rate increase. I do have two citizens who wish to be heard after we do the land acquisition presentation. We will take your comments at that point.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So staff's been working very hard to look at objective ways of looking at all of the land acquisition challenges and opportunities that we have. And as Rahim will outline, there's many different areas where we look at different types of land purchases. We always have more requests and need than we have money. And so what we were attempting to do is begin to put objective criteria around how we approach it. This is the beginning of a discussion, so we'll outline some parameters today and some thoughts. We want to receive your thoughts to where we can refine this further, to where we're in agreement in the way in which we're going to approach land acquisition for the next decade. So this is the beginning of a discussion, and with that, I'll turn it over to Rahim and let him outline that.
Madam Chair, before we start, just as a little housekeep FYI, I know this has happened several times on the PowerPoint that shows up on Granicus. It's all blurred together. I mean, you can't read the song.
Can't read it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to do color separation, it looks like.
Yeah.
The PDF for the correspondence also is not available.
It's an error message.
Yeah, we can't access it.
Okay. We'll take a look at that, and I do know that there's, and I think on like the color stuff, it's when we convert it to iPad versus a computer, then we get translation issues.
It's the same thing we had at the street at Booker Creek. One version was like this, and the other version came in clean that Bill sent us later.
Okay. We'll certainly work on that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rahim Harji, Assistant County Administrator. So like Barry said.
Get your mic closer.
Like Barry said, we're going to provide an overview of how we're purchasing land and for what reasons. Just a quick agenda of what we're going to discuss today. We're going to start off with just a simple question of why, answering the simple question of why do we acquire property? We'll get into how do we address opportunities as they come up, and then talk about some categories of acquisition needs. These are specifically identified parcels, and then talk about some next steps. So why do we acquire properties? They're basically, the way we're defining it in this presentation is falling into two categories. One, which is the opportunities portion, basically evaluating the current and potential use of a specific property that becomes known to us. So if somebody approaches the county and says, "Look, I have this piece of parcel, this parcel, are you interested?" We might not have it on a list for a specific need, but what is the process we follow to evaluate that? The second category is to meet a specific identified need. And these are defined parcels that we know of for some particular reason. Maybe we have known for years that there's environmental benefit to acquiring it. Maybe there is a need for right-of-way in that specific area. So we split it up into those two categories. So to address the opportunities, this is where a parcel, a situation where a parcel's availability comes to our attention. Usually, we have to turn these around quickly. You know, the seller or the potential seller wants an answer real quick, and we can't just wait. So what we have developed is a process, and that's what you see is the general workflow, where once we have a notice of availability, however it comes in, whatever the entry point is, central point of contact for coordinating this is real estate management. What they will do is work with the departments to review that specific parcel based on their priorities within their departments, and we'll touch on that in the second part. This is going to be an expedited process. We already have a process in place through the CAT system to review this quickly. The intent is to just turn it around much quicker. But at the end of it, whether we say yes or no, we want to purchase it, there will be a staff report saying, here's what we looked at, here are the benefits of purchasing it, and if there are none, there will be none, but we will define what we looked at and whether we think there is a viability for the parcel or not. So I'll touch on the categories that we'll look at in the next coming slides, but that is the general process. So as far, to define this a little better, we split it up into three categories of acquisition needs where we have defined parcels that we know we want to purchase. They fall into three main buckets. The first one is the environmental lands and parks portion. The second portion is economic development and housing. And then the last one is other county needs. So this is the catch-all for anything that doesn't fall in those first two buckets. With that, I'll turn it over to Paul Cozy. He'll go through the parks, the environmental lands and parks acquisition process. Mike will talk about the economic development and housing. I'll talk about the other needs, and then we'll close out with our next steps.
Thank you, Rahim. Madam Chair, County Administrator, Commissioners, Paul Cozy, Parks and Conservation Resources Director. So our current acquisition process, or lack thereof, as Rahim had mentioned, a seller or sometimes a neighbor will approach the county and say, "Hey, this parcel is available. Would you mind picking it up? We think it would make a great park." Or, you know, there may be other reasons that they think there could be some type of wildlife or something like that. So it comes to the department, and we give it what basically is a cursory review relating to its value for environmental protection, proximity to existing parks, or a current or previously completed plan. For example, we have the Recreation and Open Space Culture System Master Plan. We have the Boding Access Task Force that kind of directed us to look at specific parcels when they become available. However, right now, there's no prioritization of the properties, whether it's for their value or for their geographical location. And most of our acquisitions are only considered through environmental or passive recreation focus while we know that there are some needs for actual recreation areas. You'll see, right now, we have, just on our list of parcels that we've been approached about, we've got over 60 parcels that exceed over $30 million in value. So as the Administrator said, the need is great, the funding is small. So when we look at the revised approach that we're going to take, we start off with a master parcel list. That would consist of all the parcels that we already have been contacted about previously or have identified, as well as any potential parcels that could be added to the list as an opportunity. Then we will use our internal stakeholders, which I'll talk about in a little bit more, that will score each parcel based on the criteria being set to evaluate those parcels, kind of a department-level prioritization. Then those overall ranked parcels list will consist of all the parcel types, both environmental and/or parkland, as well as recreational parcels. And it will be programmed into the county's project portfolio process at a county-wide level prioritization. We will use this data then to program our property purchases and any associated improvements needed into the CIP plan on an annual basis. Of course, you buy a property, you're going to do something with it, whether it's having to remove structures or do some type of environmental mitigation or actual park development. So as I mentioned, we would have a team of representatives from various departments to provide a holistic perspective. That would include Parks and Conservation Resources, real estate management, public works, specifically the Environmental Management Division, utilities, planning, economic development, and strategic performance management. That way, everyone is able to look at a particular parcel and determine, well, this may be useful for an environmental perspective, but another department may also have a need, maybe not as large. And so there would be opportunities to cost share and only acquire what we really need or what we would intend on developing. It also opens up potential other funding sources as well, so that it wouldn't all fall on maybe a penny. It could be grant potential or some of the enterprise funds. Now, the ranking process does not replace the current real estate management process, but instead is meant to supplement the process that's currently in place. So when we talk about scoring, ranking, we're looking at multiple criteria. Got several listed here, but for example, the protection of environmentally sensitive lands, whether that's species protection, access to water, which has been a priority in the past, the proximity to target communities, resiliency, floodplain protection. There's a number of criteria that would be included. So as I said, there would be a point system applied to each criteria. For example, if we're looking at purchasing a property or acquiring a property for environmental benefit, then we might want to score it by looking at, are there any, that this property would protect an endangered species, might be worth 10 points. If it protects a threatened species, it might.
Answer your slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. Protects a threatened species, it might be worth fewer points. If it doesn't provide any protection, it might not be worth any points. The important thing is that the criteria is used for all of the parcels. However, the importance of the weight of those criteria would really depend on what the intended use is for the property. Then we would take these scores, and the intent is to generate a GIS heat map. So if you want to look at everything and see which are the most valuable properties in terms of environmental protection, or what are the most valuable properties in terms of recreation potential, that's how we would have that map and be able to look at that. And then as other properties come available, we could add that to the map and see where those fall into the ranking. So I backed it up there. So as I mentioned before, environmental and recreation are going to have different rankings depending on the purposes. And if you look at the chart, you'll see some are in purple, the environmental lands. The type of criteria that would be scored higher for environmental would include those things like the protection of environmentally sensitive lands, the access to water, the existing park or preserve infill parcels, buffering values, those types of things. While recreation properties, you're going to build ball fields or a community park or playgrounds, you would look at the recreational benefit, the proximity to target communities, the O&amp;M cost impacts would have a higher impact on the score, meaning they would be weighted heavier. So you'd take all of those parcels together, and you would come up with a prioritized table of parcels. So if you were looking at what is the most desirable or highest-ranked environmental property, you would look at those that were scored for those purposes. If you were looking at recreational, you would look to that score so that you're not trying to decide between, do I want to buy an environmental property, or do I want to buy a recreational property? It would really be based on what the need or what the strategic focus is as far as what direction the board is going.
Quick question. So where does the total dollar availability come into play? For instance, if you had 10 priorities there, and the first one was number one by far, but it was a $10 million purchase, and the next nine were $500,000 purchases, values probably in the others, and you could probably pick up nine versus the one that is your top one but clearly more expensive. How does that, does that get filtered in at this point in the subjective arena? Or is there a?
Let me try to answer that, because this is not going to replace the human element to looking at this. What it'll do is give you a list, a total, to where you can then, we can then discuss that. And we can say, you know what, that $10 million means these other projects aren't going to get done, but it's worth it. Or, yeah, but it's just too expensive. So we then have something to work from to where it's a question of priorities, and then we can navigate that.
Who's "we"? Up here? Us? Okay.
Ultimately, we want to bring this to the board with a set of recommendations and a plan on how to move forward. This has to be a dynamic process, because the money comes in over a 10-year period, property comes available, you know. So if you go out and you spend all of your money the one year, and then property comes available, then you don't, you're not able to access that.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you.
It's not meant to replace the human element. What we're trying to do is develop objective ways in which to look at it with a staff recommendation that then you can consider as you debate the varying priorities.
So as I was saying, you end up with that total score, and as the Administrator mentioned, you know, the highest-ranked parcel may be well beyond what we're able to afford or what we're able to program for that type of purchase, you know. And then it might be, we set that aside, we look at what may be coming up, you know, with the FCT program or something like that, as we've done before, to see, maybe we can't get it now, but there may be opportunities down the road. So as you kind of mentioned, the challenge is, of course, the opportunity to purchase a property may not align with a prioritized list, and there's always that FOMO fear of missing out when you're looking at, well, if I put my money here, then geez, if that property comes available in two years, you know, I'm going to be out of luck. So if you have a prioritized list, at least that can tell you, what are the things I'm still looking at, how important those are. You know, appraisals and zoning are always difficult things to deal with, especially when you're looking at highest and best use. You know, it's difficult to compete with a developer who's looking at building a subdivision when you're trying to protect a couple of acres of rosemary sage or something like that. Of course, we talked about funding challenges. There's also community impacts. When you're looking at, for instance, a recreation facility where we've determined there's a need for lighted ball fields, that community might be fine with having a park, that's a passive park that, you know, doesn't have lights, but when you talk about putting in ball field lights, then you've got an issue because there's an opposition to that element of the park. And we also have competing priorities, and that's part of what this process does, kind of removes those competing priorities, because all the departments are aware of what's going on. So if there is another need for it or a higher need from the board's priority, we're not going to be negotiating to purchase a property that might be something that needs to be available for economic development or affordable housing or that type of thing. And so as far as the timeframe, we do have a working group, as I mentioned, with the various departments involved. We expect to finalize our proposed ranking criteria next month and work with BTS on the GIS heat map. We've also discussed kind of a site selector layer that we would be able to incorporate into the heat map. For instance, if the board were to say that, hey, we would like to have a playground within walking distance of every unincorporated community, we could not only look at where are all the playgrounds, but then look at this heat map with parcels that have been identified and be able to say, well, these are the ones we should be looking at if we want to put a playground within walking distance, that type of thing. And then we're also going to take this to the Park Advisory Board in our May meeting, and then hopefully be able to do the formal implementation of the revised procedures by the end of the summer. Any questions?
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this is, we have other departments that are going to talk about their, but do we have, I mean, I know anecdotally, we all get people who stop us and say, oh, that property should be a park or, you know. But do you all have a kind of a running list of, on a scratch pad somewhere of?
Yes, we have a running list on a scratch pad. Yes, sir.
And I didn't see on the criteria, but I assume there's a 10-point bonus for any property that's in Lealman, right?
Well, but that is the target, proximity to the target community is one of the criteria. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cozy.
So don't forget high point. Any other questions for Paul at this point?
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Middell with the Economic Development Department.
There's just no hyperlink source to check.
Good afternoon. Mike Middell, Economic Development Director for Pinellas County. What I'm here to talk about is, for the first time, we may have some money to do something about acquisition for economic development and housing projects. We've had housing in the past under the affordable housing, but this is an opportunity to have a nexus between the housing and job creation and retention in the county. And the Penny inter-local agreement is what is governing the process here of identifying and acquiring the land. The first step is that the net proceeds for this countywide off-the-top money is that it'll be, initially, the guidelines will be developed by our Joint Review Committee, which is set forth as 12 individuals in the housing, economic development, and planning elements of staff of our municipalities and the county. So we've got those 12 individuals who will be meeting soon to begin that process of setting up those guidelines. Then the, also within the inter-local, the economic development capital projects have to be limited, again, to capital projects. That word is in there. We need to have some kind of physical infrastructure or land, and it has to be associated with job creation and retention. Now, the inter-local also allows us to take on housing projects of the variety that we had in Penny III, where we can buy and hold land for housing purposes. And then we can also use that economic development money for elements that may not have originally applied under FS 212 of 55. So we've got some more flexibility in this penny than we've ever had before for housing. The consultant, we've hired a consultant. You provided us with a CCNA-like process where we have, on February the 5th, we have some planning consultants that we can bring onboard. We are in negotiations now with HDR and SB Friedman to do a study for us, to prepare us for this process. And they will be charged initially with looking at the housing issue. We've done a lot of studies on economic development properties over the years, but the first step will be to take a look at housing need by a stratification of the area median income. So we'll have, we'll look at 0 to 60% of AMI, 60 to 80, 80 to 120, and 120 and over, and then look in depth at what are the needs, what is the inventory like in each of those processes, and how do we compare to the surrounding counties? Because one of the economic development concerns is if we don't have the housing here, they might be living elsewhere, and eventually, the jobs will go elsewhere because they don't want their employees to have to drive for an hour and a half to get to work. So this all is interlinked together, the housing, the transit, the economic development, the job base itself, and then, of course, training programs to bring it all together. That's really part of the infrastructure and the nexus of this job creation, is to bring all of those elements together. So this consultant engagement will allow us to look at that, first at housing, then looking at sites that are appropriate for both housing and economic development purposes, and then to actually give us draft guidelines that will go to the JRC for them to review and approve, modify maybe, and bring to you. So then the final step, just looking at our timeframe, March 25th will be our first meeting of this Joint Review Committee, just kind of an organizational meeting at that time, and we'll set a schedule and move on from there. The goal is to have the guidelines complete by August meeting of the Joint Review Committee and bring it to you in September. You have to approve the guidelines, and ultimately, when these projects come to bear, we don't know what guidelines or criteria we're going to use. We know they'll be related to job creation and retention, but those, any project will be determined ultimately by you. The spend, the project itself, will be your decision as the Board of County Commissioners. It's not the JRC's decision, it's not the city's decision. It all comes back to you. And then in January of 2020, the first penny funds become available. We can start spending that, but in reality, when we look at the capital budgets process, it'll probably be October of 2020 before we see budgeted economic development and housing projects coming to you out of that penny.
And Commissioners, we are also working with Board Pinellas and with Brad over at this PSTA around really focusing on where we invest money, where we can really create strong linkages for transit, job training, and housing, and have a focus, you know, rather than, you know, scattered everywhere of something that we're unable to support from an infrastructure because we know we don't have enough money at PSTA, of focusing where we do this, and working then and creating these partnerships with the cities to where we can actually deliver something that improves the wealth and value in that area.
Could you remind me again who's on the Joint Review Committee?
Sure. I'll try. I'll be serving, as will Sherri Harris from our Housing, as a Housing Section Chief in the Planning Department, Scott Swerengen, who's in our Planning Department also. The City of St. Pete will be Alan Delisle, who's their Deputy Mayor over Economic Development Planning and Real Estate, and Rob Gerdis, who's over their housing element. City of Clearwater is Denise Sanderson, who's over Economic Development and Housing. Largo is Carol Strickland, over their planning and ED departments. Dunedin is Bob Ironsmith, who's over ED and housing also. We'll see a pattern here. Now for Pinellas Park is Ben Ziskel, who again is over their planning and economic development components. Then we get into the multi-jurisdictional ones. The Safety Harbor, Oldsmar, and Tarpon Springs Group will initially be Matt Spoor from Safety Harbor. The initial inland communities will be Mark Ely from Seminole, and initial beaches will be Jonathan Evans.
I'm sorry, what's the last name?
Jonathan Evans from the beaches.
From the beaches. Okay. Great.
Thank you, and I will turn it back over to Rahim.
I'm sorry, does anybody else have any questions?
I just had an observation. Elated that we're moving forward with this, could you send us that list again that you just, I know you sent it to us before, but Commissioner Justice and I, before our meeting this morning, were chatting with an employee, longtime employee, who just built a home in Pasco, just because the affordability difference. So it's vital that we move forward with this housing project. Thank you.
So I'm going to touch on the other county needs. This is kind of that third bucket that's the catch-all for everything else. Generally, in this category, the land is not always the primary focus. The focus is meeting another need. So a couple of categories that this could fall into this bucket is flood reduction. We know we have a flooding issue in this particular area. As part of the solution to fixing the flooding issue, it may result in purchasing a parcel. Right-of-way needs, you know, we need to do some sit intersection improvements. Part of that may involve buying a portion of a parcel. So this is our all-catch-all. The parcel acquisition is part of a larger project. So that project scope will identify what parcels we need to buy. And we have a prioritization process already in place for that, which is specific to addressing the need, which is the project portfolio process, which I'll touch on in a second. So to Paul's point earlier of that department-level prioritization, okay, we have priority one to priority 100. We have the same type of structure for stormwater projects, for right-of-way projects, or transportation projects. That all goes, that's the department-level prioritization. That goes through a county-level prioritization, how do we balance all our needs, through the project portfolio process, which is, every department submits their requests, it goes through a review and prioritization, I'll touch on those factors in a second, and we allocate budgets to it through our CIP process. So it's an annual ongoing thing. The factors, we're looking at countywide, I won't go through each of them, but you've seen this before. A focus on asset preservation, protect what we have before we start going and doing other things. Public demand is an area. Regulatory requirements are the specific things we have to do to meet regulatory requirements. Public health, safety, and welfare is another category, and we have defined point systems and that. So this, every project that we put into the CIP plan will go through this. And then in closing, going back and touching on those three categories. So the, what we're working on right now is finalizing the prioritization. So the, what we're working on right now is finalizing the prioritization of the environmental and parks properties that Paul mentioned. The other county needs, those are being finalized right now. And both those two categories, their countywide ranking process is the project portfolio process that we talked about. And then the third category is the economic development and housing. We'll be going through the Joint Review Committee and then coming back to the board with a prioritization. So that's all I have.
Thank you. To go back to Paul's scratch pad. Do we, I mean, so you have a long list that you're going to put through this initial process. I guess I'm wondering, like, so we'll see it in a group during your timeline, you'll go through your prioritization, your ranking, your criteria. But like, if, for example, a piece of property came aware to me tomorrow, how would I get that into the machine of getting evaluated?
So what I would suggest from a workflow perspective, going back to that opportunities workflow that we talked about, let me just go back to that slide real quick. Because the parcel you might be aware of may have multiple uses or potential uses. The way we would like to move forward with that is through this process. We have criteria that we've developed to evaluate within each department. If you let the county administrator know, it would go through this process. Real estate would be the point of contact. We'd run it through the review. And then at the end of it, it would be a yes or no with a report saying why it's a yes or no.
I guess I'm just wondering about how it works. It's starting to make me think of the TDC capital projects process a little bit. Okay.
The concept there being, okay, somebody contacts you, they call you about, hey, let's buy this piece of property, you know, you want to buy this piece of property. Well, if, it may be, yeah, that would be a good addition to our park. But when we look at the other priorities that we have, it may not score as high. And so we may be looking at those opportunities. So that's going to be a kind of a judgment call. But if they go through an objective way of looking at it and scoring it, it'll at least give it a relative ranking of where it fits on our priority list. And then, you know, gives us a idea of how to move forward.
So in this initial list that you're working on now, how many pieces of property, parcels are?
A lot.
And they're all, all of those parcels are currently for sale or potentially for sale?
They're in different stages. Most of them are not for sale. They're not actively being, most of them are not being actively, are not active on the market as for sale.
And that's also the part of the difficulty of this. It's not going to replace the human element of evaluating and discussing these by making kind of a judgment call of whether we wait for the opportunity to exist. And that'll be, it'll be, you know, is it realistic that that's going to come available? Or should we move ahead with some of these other priorities? And we can discuss that because now we have all the projects identified, and it gives us relative ranking.
And then just out of ballpark, how many parcels are on this? How big is the scratch pad?
60. About 60. And to Paul's point, the appraised value, property appraisers' value on it is about 32 million. So it's a lot. It's a lot. And that's just looking at it from what we know today. Just to the point of doing the GIS map analysis, of the heat map analysis, we may find out that this parcel that we had on the list might not make sense to buy because we should go after these because it connects the corridor, or wildlife corridor, or it is closer to providing services to a target community. Having it visual and a ranking criteria helps us make better decisions.
Thank you.
Okay. So those 60 parcels are across all the departments, not just parks then?
No, these are specifically related to environmental and park properties.
Okay. Because I would imagine you would have a list of stormwater and right-of-way and intersection and everything else like that.
But to that point, it is tied to solving a drainage issue or fixing an intersection improvement project. And the cost to purchase that land is part of the total project cost. So that's a whole nother bucket underneath that other need section.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, well, I think that funding source for each of these categories is kind of complicated. And some of the things will fit into different pots of money, and some will be very specifically driven. And it seems like at some point, well, it's a very complicated issue that we're talking about. But I do think it helps communication between departments and obviously with us. So however it kind of morphs out at the end, it's going to be a great process. And so I guess my only thought was, and I'm sure, that's not for today, but for another time, I'm sure there's a thought process or maybe a developing thought process on the disposition of properties as well. So acquisition is what we're talking about now, but we've got gobs and gobs, that's a technical term, of property that we own that perhaps doesn't fit anymore for one reason or another. And it'd be nice not to hold them if we can do that. So that will be interesting as well. And just so that we start to understand that, like you have a CIP plan, and it would be nice to have that kind of thought process without identifying necessarily properties because that gets kind of tricky too.
You'll see a bucket and the prioritization happen in the background.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but no, I think this is great. I'm looking forward to that prioritization conversation because it does have to do with funding, and that's critical.
And Commissioners, if you'll notice, there was kind of a new bucket, which is kind of an area that we've touched on, but not necessarily had a tight frame around, which is active recreation. And what do we do, and who owns it, and what role we play in its ongoing maintenance? That's an area we're working to define and refine and working with Pat Cozy and his group. And so that'll be more to come on that.
Is that timeframe different than the ones we've talked about?
Well, we're looking, this is land acquisition, so we can get the priority around it. But we're working on the role, and we're going to come back to you with kind of our thoughts in terms of how we really haven't managed active recreation, more passive, tied to the parks, trails, things like that. But there's other areas, and so we're going to refine that a little bit more and bring that back to you.
But that'll also have potentially purchase implications too.
That's correct, because what do we do if we do purchase it? Who owns it? Who's managing it? You know, and those types of conversations. And it's really, it's really not that many areas. And so we can pretty, we can get our hands around this pretty easily, but we gotta, but we gotta know what we're doing, and we gotta agree on the approach.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a comment and then a question. Just gobs and gobs of good stuff here, Commissioner Eggers, to borrow your technical phrase. But I just don't want to take it for granted what a great job staff and administrator are doing on this. This isn't just data-driven decision-making, but it's really strategic business intelligence. If you look at all the things they talked about, how it's taking this data and incorporating our CIP, CRA, stormwater, even recreation, GIS, all those systems we've invested in, they're using that now to link all those things we've talked about together and make a better informed recommendation to us. So I just wanted to give y'all kudos for that. My question is, are there any remaining dollars in the third penny, the current penny, for either the Housing Land Trust or for green space preservation?
I'll address the second one first because I just asked that question before this meeting, and the answer is zero.
For both?
Zero dollars for the green space.
Okay.
We, what we did in Penny III was for the green space and like the parks and environmental lands category, we front-loaded a lot of the purchases. So we bought it in the first half of the penny. So right now, in the CIP plan for our approved budget, there's zero dollars towards that. The intent is to program all this for Penny IV. That way, we have a structured approach to buying that land. For the housing components, it's also zero? What Jackie said, four and five million?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point?
I do like the very logical way that we're approaching this. I know years ago, you know, you had the red letter charette, the red? Red flag charette, and kind of identified all the environmental lands. And over time, you know, we're able to buy some of them. I will share with you a memory that I have that we always should be mindful that our staff is probably, keeps us from overpaying for land. And I recall one meeting where we were trying to buy the McMullen property up in Wellsprings, and someone stacked the room with the Girl Scouts, and the price shot up. So let's be mindful that, let's use our staff in the right way so that we don't overpay for land going forward.
And in that regard, we may need to put things in buckets and stuff because, you know, we've actually have examples of people trying to go and get rezoning and other things simply because it's on our list. You know, and.
Be very careful.
One thing I'd like to add to what Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Seale just said. And if you looked at the process we're going through now, it is not just a department-specific process. It is a team approach where you look at the stakeholders. It's every department. So we're talking, we're sitting together, and not just looking at it from one perspective. Refreshing approach.
That heat map that you're talking about, can you do that with our existing properties too?
We will actually have that on there because we need to look at connections to existing facilities.
Oh, beautiful.
It'll be on there.
That would be nice to see. Or maybe not, but it would be informative to see.
Kind of to piggyback on that, that's a conversation that Barry and I have had, is we really do need to review our portfolio of lands that we already own. Some of them might be able to be sold, some of them might be able to use for economic development or for parks or for other purposes where we already own it. So I'm glad that we're starting through that whole review, and we'll see what nets out of that as well.
And have a great time on your vacation.
Have a great, great and safe trip.
It's vacation.
We have two citizens who wish to speak. One is limited to three minutes, so if someone can turn the timer on, that would be great. And David Waddell, and thereafter, Mr. Shaw.
Chairperson Seale, please, before you start the clock. I just wanted to introduce myself to the new members, Commissioner Peters and County Administrator Barry Burton. My name is David Waddell, and I want to tell you what a great community we have and the wonderful job that you and your staff do. It's a pleasure to live in this county. It truly, truly is. And thank you for all your hard work. If I may begin now. Is this where we want to put that? I think so.
Just like us, just, no, just how you had it.
There is northbound. Okay, this is our little hamlet. My name is David Waddell. I live in Clearwater, unincorporated. I represent the Pinellas Grove Hamlet Citizens Committee. We've been actively involved in our neighborhood now for going on 12 years. And as you can see, this little area here is our hamlet. We're surrounded by green space, which is great. The Bayside Bridge, when it was put in, decimated our community, and now we've just got a flooding problem that there's just no end to. We're not even talking tenure events here anymore. This is just all through July and August. It's miserable. And I'm looking at your proposed criteria. It appears that we meet quite a few of these, and one of them being flooding and retention, and the other, of course, being preservation and/or green space. And maybe down the road, I mean, these are big investments that the county has made. And we're looking at your legacies here. We're the first built-out county here in the state of Florida, and we don't have much of this land left. This is currently your major drainage features. And you can kind of see here we are by the Bayside Bridge. Well, we don't need a major drainage feature as of yet. But if we build on that land, we're going to be in big trouble. Currently, the county owns this parcel. It is in the Affordable Housing Land Trust. Well, this is an evac zone A. It doesn't make sense to put affordable housing in evac zone A. Plus, we don't have the infrastructure to support it. There is a, and Mr. Commissioner Eggers brought up that we already own this land, and this land is currently owned by Ozark or OZK, previously C-1 Bank. Sorry, I'm a little nervous today. I haven't been speaking in front of you for quite some time, which is a good thing. And this is the 100-year floodplain. And you can see here that we are indeed in the 100-year floodplain. But as well, we also have the scenic roadways here, non-commercial and scenic corridors. And we sort of have a dead zone when it comes to county parks. You'll see here that we've got Whedon Island down here, and we've got Felipe Way up here. Well, this would be just a perfect place for it, not right off. If we just keep it in preservation, take that land out of the land trust because evac zone A is not a good place for affordable housing. You can see here we have five acres of larger. This is also on the water. All these other parcels are inland. This is the only one left on the water. It only makes sense. And we've got seagrass beds there, and believe it or not, they moved the location of the ending of the Bayside Bridge because of the oyster beds out there. That's why there's a little kick to it at the end there. But we've been very patient now, going on 12 years. And we've, you know, we've done the best we can to keep it the way it is now. And let's, gosh, let's not lose this opportunity. Sorry I went over, but it's good that you gave me this opportunity here to speak. And it's excellent that you've got these goals, objectives, and policies. So I think a lot of the criteria that I've highlighted here, you'll see, we meet. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
It could be.
Mr. Shaw?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Chair. Welcome, Mr. Burton. Welcome, Mrs. Peters. We're here today in relation to the other property that Dave was showing you. Is that on there right?
It'll show up now. There we go.
And this is the one that's owned by Ozark Bank. Our committee has spoken before the County Commission numerous times over the past 12 years. March of 2016, the local planning agency rejected 4 to 1 land use and zoning change requests put forward by Ozark Bank to construct townhomes on the environmentally sensitive habitat property located at 164th Avenue and 49th Street North, Clearwater. Penny for Pinellas information listed on the county's line asks citizens to get involved. We have the county commissioner's goal listed under Penny for Pinellas for land acquisition as the target 250 acres for acquisition to include environmentally sensitive habitat acres to preserve Pinellas County community's natural resources. The aforementioned property listed certainly qualifies. Ciara Club, the Audubon Society have appeared before the commission on behalf of our position concerning this Ozark Bank property lined with mangrove trees at the water's edge. Climate change, sea level rise, and storm surge situations necessitate preserving this property. Flooding is minimized by the mangroves and wetlands. Mangroves, roots purify and clean water. They control shoreline erosion, protect nearby homes from winds, storm surge, and moon tides that cause higher tides. Numerous plants, birds, seagrass, oyster beds, scallops, wildlife, and our eagles and assorted species survive and are thriving at this section of Old Tampa Bay. We again request this property be purchased and designated not suitable for development. The nitrogen and fertilizer runoff, if the property is developed, would destroy the protection provided by the mangroves and wetlands for the species thriving there currently. Flooding and drainings is also an important reason to preserve the property. Affordability component, flood insurance, and building in an evac zone A were rejected by the local planning agency citing the proximity to water. During 2015 and 16, the Board of Commissioners voted unanimously in favor of Pinellas Grove Hamlet Citizens Committee at three board meetings. Madam Chair, the environmentally sensitive property is situated within District 5 at the south end of the Bayside Bridge. Recently, we met with you and discussed the Ozark Bank property listed in the adjacent former, I only have one more sentence, Bayside Reserve's development, currently under the control of the Affordable Housing Land Trust. This trust property should be returned to public works and then be placed in preservation status, which was just mentioned up here about properties owned by the county. Please protect these environmentally, excuse me, sensitive lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being present today and sharing your thoughts.
Present.
Okay, I know. Okay, we will copy you all on this since it's a public record. And are there any other citizens that wish to be heard on this? Or any further discussion from the board before we move to the next agenda item? Okay. Mr. Administrator, solid waste tipping fee and rate increase.
The next item is the solid waste tipping fee and rate increase. Obviously, this was a discussion with the advisory committee, and so Paul is going to present to you the discussion that has occurred and the recommendations that will be coming forward.
Thank you, sir. Paul Sacco, Assistant County Administrator, Director of Solid Waste today. Just the item before you, as the Administrator said, there's an annual requirement from the county code that the technical, solid waste technical management committee, the TMC, makes a recommendation to the board on a rate recommendation. So, the process is that we would workshop this recommendation today and then bring an item back to you at your public hearing on March 12th. So, to provide you some background, to assist the TMC with their recommendation, we perform a rate analysis, a rate study analysis, which this year was performed by PRMG, who will be providing you the analysis from which the recommendation was derived. Based on the outcome of that analysis, the TMC is recommending a 6% multi-year increase beginning in October 2019. Again, this being an annual recommendation, even though this is a multi-year recommendation, the TMC would continue to review the rate analysis every year and could bring back a different recommendation next year. But based on the direction that was provided last year by the county administrator, they went ahead and looked at a three-year plan based on the analysis that you're about to see. Also, a reminder, tipping fees have not been raised since 1988, okay? So, it's been a long time. And also, there was a information that was presented to the board in the form of an update from the county administrator to provide a background on the TMC and the voting associated with that. The vote was a closed vote, it was six to five as far as the membership base. I have a breakout of that if you'd like to see that. You want to see that?
No, I'd just like to know who's on the committee and some of those major arguments for and against it, that's all. At some point, I'm sure you're going to get to that.
So, those voting for was the city of Clearwater, the city of St. Pete, which has two members, your county appointment, the representative, the representative from the private haulers, and also the representative, which we call City Group A, which includes Safety Harbor, Oldsmar, Bel Air, and Bel Air Bluffs. Okay, so they were the six highs. The five nays were the city of Dunedin, the city of Largo, city of Pinellas Park. Group B cities, which include Gulfport, Kenneth City, Seminole, and South Pasadena. And also Group C cities, which represent all the beach communities except St. Pete Beach. St. Pete Beach and Tarpon Springs were absent from that meeting.
So, they have a representative directly too?
Yes, but they were absent from that meeting. So, to surmise at least some of the discussion that took place there, I would say for those that were for, recognize that the, the funding that's available now, associated with the tipping fee, the revenues that are coming in, the tipping fees are a minority as far as the revenues coming into solid waste, the majority being the capacity payments that are received from the power purchase agreement, and also the sales that are coming in from the power purchase agreement. The capacity payments and the sales of electricity have really been subsidizing that shortage of tipping fees that are coming in for the total revenue. So, we are whole. I mean, we've had a healthy reserve for a long time, but we've really eaten into that reserve with the reinvestment that's going into that facility. So, after that $240 million investment, which you'll see in the rate analysis, leaves us about a $70 million or so reserve balance, which is, you would think, healthy, but when you look at the long-term closure requirements for solid waste, and also the annual fees that are going to be needed going forward for operations, that's where the recommendation's coming from, that it's needed to start increasing our fees now slowly as opposed to waiting to a worst-case scenario of when the tip, the power purchase agreement would end, and then we'd be looking at a giant stair-step increase as an alternative or an option. So, again, that'll all be made clear when PRMG provides, you know, their analysis. But those that were, I guess, against the increase in the tipping fee, it was kind of smeared, but it seemed like they were having previous increases in their tipping fees to their customer, well, their collection fees to their customers based on recycling, the processing, and whatnot that they've been experiencing, and possibly some of their operating costs. So, they didn't get into deep in each one of their areas, but from a summary standpoint, that seemed like where they were seeing some of their pressures, and this would be a layer on top of what they were increasing in their respective areas going forward. So, the same analysis and recommendation has been shared with all the city managers. Barry asked that that would be disseminated. They'll also receive an invitation to the public hearing, a direct invitation, and also a copy of the presentation that's being made today, following our meeting today as well. I wanted to kind of hear what that looked like. I didn't want to put the invite out if, you know, this got squashed or whatnot. So, we'll make sure we send that information out. But that's kind of the background of where we are. I don't know if there's any questions on that from a background standpoint before PRMG comes up and presents.
Just a quick question. The negotiation with the energy company for the capacity payment, is that going on now?
We have requested a formal sit-down with them. We've done as much as we could on the discovery. In fact, I was just trading emails with my Duke Energy counterpart. We were trying to set that up either for the last month or last week of March, or the first week of April, is when we're looking to start our formal negotiations with that.
The thing that strikes me is that the closer it gets to the end, the less negotiating we have to reduce now and get an extension at a higher than we would have gotten. Yes, or is that kind of in play or not?
That would be, that would be one of, that would be one of the negotiating strategies that we see. You know, there's a benefit in extending the power purchase agreement over time and pushing our payments out. I think it also helps them to do so. So, you're right, the further we get down the line, it may weaken our position a little bit, but really, those payments are, you know, increasing at a really high rate, that they're still, I believe Duke would be motivated to continue to look at those things. So, that's kind of where we are with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, with, I'm sorry.
So, you mentioned this, the solid waste tipping fee revenues are much less than the capacity payments. Could you just maybe even for this past year, provide a spreadsheet so that we sort of can visually see that financially?
I think you'll see that in the, in the presentation, but if you want to see more than that, I'll be happy to provide anything in addition to that.
The presentation's.
Well, he's going to pull it up, but if, you're not seeing that on your screen?
I don't see anything.
We don't have anything.
Oh, I thought there was an, well, I didn't pull it up, but I mean, there's an attachment to the, to the agenda item I thought you all had.
Thank you.
Okay. But that's going to be included there, but if there's something more that you need, I'll be happy to provide whatever that is.
Okay, thank you.
There's a whole bunch of stuff here.
It just come up.
So, with that, I'm going to introduce from PRMG, Terry Bovary.
Oh, okay.
He's going to be doing our.
I didn't know, like, that he was coming up. That's where the confusion was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We thought you were gone.
No, 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 I'm not done at all.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to get details.
You'll get the details, man.
Now, we get the details.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Terry Bovary, for the record. Here me, with me today is Nick Smith. We're with PRMG. He's a senior analyst on the study. Let me just see, make sure I can get this. Thank you, Paul, for the introduction. All right. So, PRMG was tasked with the development of a 30-year financial model forecast, and the goal of that was to examine the sufficiency of the revenues to fund the forecast of the expenditures. The, the figure on the right, the revenue sufficiency chart, gives you a breakdown of the revenues versus the expenditure requirements. On the left-hand side, you know, we talked a little bit, Paul, and talked a little bit about the capacity payments being one component of that, tipping fees being another, and that we have some other revenue streams, primarily the actual sale of electric revenue that would be accounted in that category. On the other side of the scale for the expenditures, we have our operating costs, we have our capital payments. We don't have any debt service, but if you did, that would be counted in that bucket. And then deposits for any closure and post-closure care costs associated with the landfill, which we'll talk a little bit about that later. But the way that we develop these studies is it's a somewhat data-driven process. We look at your historical expenses for over five years. We look at tonnage trends. We look at, you know, trends in cost escalation within the industry. We do a lot of these studies. We do several other counties in this region that also have waste energy facilities we perform the studies for, so we have a good understanding of, you know, the costs. And one of the things that you find out is that a lot of the operations are sort of driven by the contractual arrangements, and one of those that we talked a little bit earlier about was the power purchase agreement. So, we'll get into a little bit more detail, but that gives you a little bit of an overview. So, every single year, we're looking at this balance between the revenues and expenditures, and when we have deficiencies, we can choose to do one of two things. We can reassess our expenditures if we have control over them. We can assume a rate adjustment to the revenues that we have control over, or we can utilize reserves if we have those available. So, to give you a breakdown, the key operations is that we're disposing of waste. So, the primary means of waste coming in is referred to as MSW or municipal's always. That's essentially just Class 1 garbage, the stuff that we collect from the residential households. The Class 3 waste is sort of 50/50 yard waste and construction and demolition debris. There's some other wastes. And then byproducts of processing that waste through our waste energy facility is ash and recovered metals, and that rounds out all the waste that we process. In total, all those waste streams account for about 1.3 million tons a year, and the actual inbound excluding the ash is about a million tons a year. For the forecast period, because we are built out, we assumed minimal to no growth in the tonnage deliveries. The chart that you have here, I think, answers the question about the composition of the revenues. Each one of the bar charts is stacked on top. I'll start with the base. The dark green color represents the tip fee revenues. Those are growing over our forecast period, primarily because we programmed in assumed increases to the fee over time. There is no change to the tonnage generation, so that's the only growth in those revenues. The light blue above that represents the capacity payments, and then the lighter green on the top bar represents the electric revenue from the energy that we generate. So, you can see that the capacity payments represent the large majority of our revenues, and that those are expected to end with the agreement in 2025.
That question. Expected to end, so the capacity payments at that point, really, we're expecting zero? That's, that's a legitimate?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing that I mentioned earlier is looking at those capacity payments, spreading them out.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could look at them and spread them out if you could renegotiate the agreement, but right now, this is the forecast of the.
This is assuming that nothing is negotiated.
Nothing is negotiated in your existing contract. It also, you know, there is, there is one point of clarification as it relates to the capacity revenues. Those are only earned if you meet certain requirements. So, A, you have to have the energy capacity available at a certain percentage, so let's say it's like 80% or above of the time, you have to be available to generate that electricity. If the facility, you know, can't, isn't available at that level, then you, and you, and you may not get that capacity payment, or you may get a portion of that capacity payment. So, the study assumes that we're going to meet it, and one of the main reasons is that with the technical recovery program or plan, all the capital investment, you know, we're expecting that the waste energy facility will be able to meet those requirements.
Commissioner Welsh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These charts are great. Do you have the full report with the schedules included?
Yeah.
What, is there an escalator in the capacity payment? What does it grow from, from 18 through 24?
So, on 18, it's about $58 million, and it's grown to about $70 million by the end.
And is there an escalator built in, or what's that based on?
Yeah, it's four point, or 6.4% per year, and that's part of the, that's contractual.
And I never hesitate to thank our negotiator who negotiated this agreement. Fantastic agreement for the county for a long time.
Well, as I recall, hearing, remembering and hearing about the history, a lot of it was because of the energy crisis at the time they built the plant and the federal government. Didn't they, I believe they came in and weighed in and helped us get, almost ordered that you had to do things like this and get large capacity payments. Does that comport with what you?
Yeah, and I think the comments are spot on, and I'd also mention that for the other counties that we do work with that have waste energy facilities, they do not receive capacity payments. So, they're selling, and their revenue is primarily just on the energy sales. And in fact, one county recently, a few years ago, they, all their payments also terminated, so they had to go back and raise their rates because of the fact that they lost a substantial portion of electric revenue on a year-over-year basis.
Who's negotiating that capacity agreement? Who's doing it on our behalf?
When did the plant open, 1985?
Mid-'80s.
It was in the '80s.
It's the mid-'80s, I don't know the exact, then it was expanded, it opened up with two units, and then they expanded to a third unit, I think, around 88. I think that was when the tipping fee increased. Negotiating team is myself, two members of Solid Waste. We have a representative from CDM Smith, one of our consultants at Solid Waste, and then we have members from Birch Tree Environmental, who are actually ex-officials from Wheel Abraider that are helping us, part of our negotiating team.
And those, those folks have, they're in touch with what's going on in the market to help? Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Seal?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I was going to wait till the end, but since we brought it up, I thought I'd bring it in now. So, when I was chair of the Energy and Utilities Committee, I was approached by both Duke Energy and FPL Florida Power and Light. Both of them informed me that they were going to do everything they could to move legislation, and that even if they didn't, based on current legislation, they would not be required to continue our waste-to-energy program. And so, my question is, if in fact they do that, because they can now produce energy using solar and natural gas cheaper than they're paying us, that in this projected pro forma, have you put in some kind of?
What if we had to close the contract?
What if we, what if we're no longer going to have that contract? What is the hit, the financial hit to us, and what is the recommendation if that happens? There were numerous counties that were on the list that were going to lose their revenue, and, and I know that was the mission at the time, and I, there has been no legislation to protect the counties with those kind of resources, because if they can produce it cheaper, they're not going to make the rate payers pay more by paying the counties higher than how they can produce it.
Well, just a few comments. One is, I believe that, you know, there's always the option to sell energy to the grid. And, you know, I would, I would maybe let Paul speak to that in more detail, but the thought would be that you would continue to get energy revenue, you just may not get the capacity payments, is my understanding. And there is cash reserves that we can talk about in a few more slides that hopefully we can address your comment if it's okay to wait a few more slides to.
Okay.
Okay. Did you want to mention anything?
Well, just, as far as the revenues going away, I don't think that's reasonable. I think the Utilities Commission, the way it's been explained from Duke is that there's a standard purchase option, which is available if you were to bring a new plan online today, or if this power purchase agreement ended and we wanted to look at a standard purchase agreement. It would be the sale of electricity as we have it today, but your capacity payments being based on natural gases as opposed to what they were based on with a coal facility earlier on, those capacity payments would probably be in the realm of somewhere to $10 to $15 million a year as opposed to what we're seeing near the end, which is almost 70. So, we know that our 70 is not realistic. The whole purpose of renegotiating our agreement is to take our payments over time and squeeze them out in something that's probably in the mid-range between the two, in or around, and then we, we kind of build that into what a forecast would look like going forward. You know, I think what you'll see from PRMG is, if we're successful in doing that, the revenues with the tipping fees still need to be increased to kind of keep the balance and make sure that we're able to be whole going forward, you know, 30 years. and make sure that we're able to be whole going forward, you know, 30 years out because of that reduction in the capacity payments that we will see.
Can I just, clarification? You said that we're currently getting 70 million, and it's projected that if that were to be renegotiated based on the PSC, it would go down to 15?
If, if we're unsuccessful in negotiations at all, if we're to let this terminate, we'll get a standard purchase agreement, which would be a minimum capacity payment of like $10 to $15 million, and then an energy, you know, energy sales, just like we get today. I think the other caveat there is in a standard purchase option, the capacity availability number that we would be required to meet is probably around 90%, which, as you all know, we just got to 93 with putting $240 million into the plant. Doing that, we could probably do that for some time, but as the facility ages, we're going to have a harder time meeting 90%. So that's another advantage for us to extending out our purchase agreement. And again, we're looking for a renegotiation of an existing. If we let terminate, we'll be forced into a new, that's when we get this offset. So we're going to do our best to look for a renegotiation. That's the, that's, that's our, that's our plan.
Madam Chair? What kind of a response are you getting from Duke now?
Well, we're just, we're going to be meeting with them formally the last week of March and the first week of April.
Okay, so you have a map with them yet?
We haven't gotten that to the table formally yet.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to recap, I did want to point out one other thing here, and that is that, you know, the solid waste department operates as an enterprise fund. So it doesn't receive any revenue from the general fund and operates exclusively from the tip fees and the capacity payments and the other energy-related revenues of the system. So it's a self-funding operation. Okay, so, and I won't forget the question about the-
Thank you.
Later. The, this chart, this slide presents the, the other side, you know, of the revenues, the expenditure requirements. And starting at the base, those are the operating expenses. They represent the majority of the funding requirements from rates and revenues to the system. Slightly lighter blue, it's difficult to tell, represents the acronym there is TRP, Technical Recovery Plan Operating Expenses. So those are all the operating expenses associated with the capital investment program that's going on to renew and rehab the waste energy facility. And those will be expiring in another year or two. And then on top of that, we have deposits to reserves for capital improvements to, in order to fund the capital needs of the, of the system that's identified for the TRP and beyond for other projects. And then we have a purple-colored bar, smaller bar on the top end, and that represents our assumed annual deposits to the closure fund for the eventual closure of the landfill, the closure cost for landfill. And on top of that are some green deposits in the earlier years to operating reserves to maintain certain minimum days of cash and working capital restricted for, for operations. The yellow deposits, we're referring to those as rate stabilization deposits. What that really is, if I go back a slide, if we were to line up the expenditures against the revenues, those capacity payments that are increasing, we're going to be depositing those into our reserves, and then we're going to utilize them later to help minimize the rate increases and out years and kind of phase those in. So we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail, but that's what the yellow deposits represent. Those are excess revenues that we're setting aside for future use. So I want to talk just very briefly on the closure and the post-closure deposits. You know, landfills have a finite amount of capacity. As we're processing waste within the county here, we produce ash as a byproduct to the waste energy facility, and that ash has to be disposed of. Additionally, if the waste energy facility had an outage or whatnot, then we would take that waste and we would, you know, landfill it most likely as well. So the point is, is that, you know, we are slowly eating away at the capacity at the landfill. And eventually, we're going to incur a cost to close it, which means, you know, capping it and doing some other improvements that are fairly expensive. As well as, once it is closed, you have to maintain the facility and, you know, monitor it for environmental reasons for a number of years after that, 20 to 30 years typically. So the D, the FDIP, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, is responsible for financial assurance, because if we don't have something that demonstrates that we can pay for those expenses, once the landfill is closed, the landfill won't generate any more revenue. So to ensure that you have the money available to fund the closure, you have to meet this financial assurance test. The county and the solid waste fund meets it through the full faith and credit. But what we're proposing to do in this plan is to set aside incrementally, every year, you saw those, go back for a second, those little purple transfers on the expenditure bars, that's what those represent. Each year, those deposits add up and cumulatively grow over time. The chart on the right, the purple bars represent the ending cash balances within, that we're restricting for closure and long-term care. The mountain graph in the background represents the liability that the DEP estimates those costs in the future and says, okay, what's our liability as of today based on the amount of landfill capacity we've already used? So the plan assumes that over time, by the end, we'll have enough money to fully fund the closure liability, and it minimizes the impact to customers because we're doing small transfers over time to meet that requirement. So we talked a little bit about the expenses and the closure deposits, the capital funding requirements. The bars represent the expenditures within the plan. You know, some of the key projects are the TRP, which represents about 85 million out of the total $182 million of capital needs identified through 24. The current plan for the department is reflected there from 18 to 24, so you can see those bars going down. Then after that, we made an assumption for purposes of this study, because we're taking a very, a long-range look at this, and the results of the master plan, I think, are not yet known, and, you know, we'll find those out later on. But just to put a placeholder for what we think that expenditure requirement is going to be, we assume depreciation as an expense, you know, for all the out years to, to ensure that we fully recover the cost of operations. The green mountain graph in the back represents our capital reserves, which were targeted about one year of depreciation. So that way, if, you know, we ever needed to fund anything, and let's say the, getting back to Commissioner Pierce's question from earlier, you know, how do we deal with these, you know, potentially missing a capacity payment? Well, we need to make sure that we have adequate reserves. One of them is a capital reserve. Another reserve that I'll talk about a little bit later on is our operating reserves, and we're recommending within the study. And I believe that as part of the package, if I'm not mistaken, you may have a copy of the draft report that was submitted? Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. So we, we have a draft report that'll outline some of these recommendations in more detail for you. But suffice it to say that one of the operating reserve targets is to ensure you have about, I think it's 120 days of operating expenses setting aside for working capital plus one year's worth of the capacity payment or the electric revenue. So that way, if for whatever reason, in one given year, maybe there's some event that, you know, we aren't getting that capacity payment, it gives you some time to adjust rates if need be, or make decisions at that point about how you want to deal with that, whether we dip into reserves more or whatnot. But we try to plan for contingencies like that and have that built into the plan. And hopefully, you'll be able to see that when you get a copy of the complete report.
I'm sure I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you explain briefly, and if it's in the 12th report, I can read it there, but you're assuming depreciation is a proxy for capital needs beyond 2024. Is that a generally accepted methodology? And is it better than an actual capital forecast?
Well, I, I think a capital forecast is going to give you a better idea in terms of the timing of when those expenditures are going to hit. And I think for our purposes, this is a really good assumption. And the reason why I say that is because, you know, one of the tenets of this plan is that it doesn't assume the issuance of any debt. And so you want to set aside, you know, as you kind of utilize those assets for the eventual replacement. And so to some degree, you know, the use of depreciation as a proxy is an allowance for setting aside the funds. Whether or not we realize that expenditure in 2032, for example, at that level, you know, the plan has that kind of built in, in those out years to cover that cost when eventually you'll need to do the next TRP, let's say, which I think the current TRP takes you through 2035 and hopefully a little bit longer beyond then. But, you know, this is a very long-range planning study, and so that's why that assumption was used. However, I do want to mention that I think that the recommendation from the TMC is to do a three-year rate plan. So while we do take a long look at this, the focus is really on the near term, you know, knowing what we know today.
And is that method used around the nation?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I can go into more detail if you want, but there are a few different practices, both in the private and the public side. You know, on the private side, I think depreciation is expense in terms of, you know, setting rates. And then, you know, for, for private utilities, at least on the water and sewer side, for example, you can get a return on investment or on the electric. It's based on your investment, you get a rate base as well. But depreciation is an expense that you can recover from the rates. On, on the public side, you know, we tend to rely more on the CIP plans as they're constructed, and then when there's less resolution on, you know, understanding of maybe what those needs are, defaulting to depreciations is an accepted practice.
And how do you build in the higher cost for expenditures, you know, 10, 15 years from now versus today? Depreciation doesn't really capture that, does it?
Well, it's tough to say, but it's the best proxy that we have, we would say that we have. So that's why we assume that. Because I mean, you know, forecasting out that far, I mean, even forecasting out past five years, you know, we're looking into our crystal ball. We don't know what the foundational rate of inflation, we don't know what construction costs are going to look like. We certainly don't know what sort of changes in regulations may exist if you had, like to the waste energy facility, you know, if you, if you had to do something for air or anything like that or other, other sorts of things. So, you know, the, the plan that I think we have for the out year is based on current conditions, what we know today. And we think it's the, the best estimate we have at this point.
Okay. Is there, can we get that report early? Take a look at it? Is it?
Hi, I'm Lynda Larkins with the Office of Management and Budget. The Granicus item is out there and available for you to review. It's completed its circulation. I believe the number is 19-198A, and his, their report, PRMG's report, is attached to that.
Yeah, we can't get there yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So based on these assumptions about what we think the revenues are going to look like over the near term and over the longer term, and as well as our forecast of, you know, expenditures, we, we identified a need to, to raise rates at some point. We presented, we were asked to develop three scenarios that examine questions about the timing of what those rate needs would be, and if we deferred or delayed based on these underlying assumptions, how much greater the rate needs would be. And the TMC decided to recommend, as Paul mentioned, you know, a three-year rate plan, and they decided scenario one, which is to begin the rate increases sooner, but that there end up being a lower annual increase. Presently, about 6% per year, as you can see from the table to the right. Scenario three, I'll jump to that one, because scenario one and three are sort of like bookend assumptions. Scenario three looks to what year can we defer raising rates and exhausting cash reserves? And that's obviously a, a much less fiscally conservative, you know, option, because you don't have the reserves available if something were to happen. And, you know, we could theoretically wait until about 2030 through this modeling exercise. But again, you know, there's a lot of, there's, it's a lot less fiscally conservative option. Option two was somewhere in the middle, what happens if we waited until just the end of the power purchase agreement and started raising rates? And what we sort of found through this sensitivity exercise was that, you know, for every year that we delayed not raising rates, we found that we needed to raise that subsequent year and all subsequent years thereafter about 1% more per year. So if, for example, we decided not to assume a rate adjustment at 6% in 2020, and we were to start with 2021, that 6% might look like six and a half to maybe 7%. And then this following year for 2022 would be six and a half to 7%. And so that, I think, was a key driver for some of the folks on the TMC, the members, to recommend scenario one. In terms of impact to customers, while we don't know the specific amount of waste generation per household for each one of the communities, the cities, the municipalities, based on our experience, you know, a residential household may generate around one ton per year. And so if we were to say that the tip fee, which represents the cost per ton, were to increase by 6% from present, the present rate of 37.50 to 39.75, that's about a $2.25 increase. So the cost to a municipality from this would be around $2.25 per household if we assume that they generate about one ton per household. And that would be an annual cost increase.
Annual cost? So $2.25?
For the entire year. So I, I want to make that point just because the 6% can sound like a lot, but in terms of the real impact to the residents, it, it's maybe a little bit easier to understand $2.25 a year. But, you know, don't hold us to it, because again, it depends on the amount of waste generation per household.
So you divide that by 12 to get the monthly impact?
Yes, sir.
Right. Fifteen, 20 cents increase roughly.
And what about a typical commercial? Do we have those kind of?
You know, I, I think it, you know, I, I guess, commercial waste generation would vary a lot depending on the type of business. So I couldn't, I'd maybe have to comment about a specific business. But, you know, again, from their perspective, it would be about a 6% increase on whatever that cost is relative to their overall cost of operations.
Any other questions at this point?
Sorry, so I just wanted to mention, this is a chart, I think, that kind of summarizes the annual operations a little bit better, where it brings together both the revenues compared to the expenditures and sort of highlights the underlying issue that we've been talking about throughout the presentation and Paul even segueing. The bars represent the expenditures, the mountain graphs in the back represent our revenue inflows. So you can kind of see after 2025, we have a significant portion of those revenues go away. Additionally, the, the green, the base of that mountain chart, that green representing the tip fees, if we didn't apply any rate increases, those would not increase at all. Those would be flatlines. So the, the gap between the funding requirements and the revenues would be even greater than when we're forecasting here if we took no action to adjust rates.
It's a recommendation for three, 6% for the next three years roughly, and then is that same increase going out assumed, or is it lessened?
For scenario one, it would be about 6% a year through, yeah, for the foreseeable future through at least the early 2040s. But, you know, the alternative is that you'd have higher rate increases, you know? And, you know, to, to give you a comparison, scenario three, in 2030, you'd see, you know, something close to about 100% increase in the fees. So that could present some rate shock to, you know, businesses, for example, or even municipalities.
But again, looking at the tipping fee beyond 2021, are you still doing 6% a year? Every year?
Yeah, and this long range-
Through 2048?
About through 2034, I think it was.
Oh, 2034, okay.
Or 2043, excuse me.
I'm sorry, 2043?
Yeah, about 2043, we were raising rates at about 6% a year under this scenario. And actually, maybe I can jump to an FAQ slide that would help out. This is a comparison, so I'm sorry, a lot of numbers on this, but you can see scenario one with the percentage increases, and it shows, it doesn't take it all the way out of 2048, but-
I see.
You can see through 2035 what that looks like. And this is, you know, some of the information that was shared with the TMC members. So in terms of- So in terms of, you know, how do we, how do we compare to other communities? Very favorably. And it has a lot to do with capacity payments and the operations of staff and good decision-making and whatnot. And you can kind of see some of the lowest rates on this survey. The basis for the ones that we chose were to try to examine other waste, other counties with waste energy facilities, as well as some other ones that are in proximity to, you know, the county here in South Florida. And even those that have only landfills, which is a less costly means of disposal, very comparable to them. And so with the recommended rate adjustment from the TMC, you'd still be very competitive and comparable to others throughout, you know, the region.
How many, are there a lot of those that have the capacity payment, or just a few of them?
Like I mentioned, I mean, I don't know of any others that really have it. I can tell you with certainty that Lee County does not, Hillsborough County does not. And I don't believe Palm Beach County does either.
What kind of increases do you see in their tipping fees? Are they, are they in the standard 3%, 4%? Or they?
I would say in that range or higher. You know, Lee County's been above that range for the last few years, precisely because they lost some energy revenue and had to make up for it with, you know, their tip fees. You know, Hillsborough County slightly above inflation for cost of operations on the disposal side, so.
So over time, we'd be getting closer to the median or the middle, but still behind.
You know, and the other thing to mention, too, is, is like Hillsborough County, for example, their tip fees closer to $60, $70 a ton. So, you know, a, you know, a 3% increase for them on a dollar terms to the ton is, you know, probably comparable to your 6% increase to, you know, a tip fee is half the level.
Very good.
So I think I heard you say that Palm Beach County doesn't have a capacity payment?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so, but I can confirm that.
I think it would be interesting to know who didn't. And then, so it would be interesting to see those who don't have capacity payments that are close to our tipping fees, that we look at their budgets and see how they've been able to attain really a very attractive tipping fee if they're not getting capacity payments. So, you know, almost do a, look at their finances and talk with them just to see if there's a best practice that we should be implementing here.
And to see if they've been keeping their plan up with good capital investment, that's another piece. We, apparently, we've been doing that pretty well.
Not many people have the, you know, the level of availability, I would say, of your electrical generation capacity. I think that you would find that this facility is at, even right now, without having fully completed the TRP plan. So it's.
It's what?
It's very, it's, you have a very strong operation at the waste energy facility, from my perspective.
You mean as far as being productive?
Yes.
Yes.
And available to burn waste. The, you know, what really counts is the availability of the facility, you know. You know, is it out because you have to do maintenance on it? Or is it in a ready state of availability? And, you know, this facility, I think, is at, I think Paul mentioned 93% already, which I think we would never assume more than 94% for like a new facility. So very high rate of availability.
Question. I have a question.
Yes.
The, are you familiar with the recycle industry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the direction that that's heading now, which may be permanent or may be just a blip.
Yeah.
Do you see more and more of the recycle products being diverted to facilities like ours versus the market? As these agreements with the recycle companies come to an end?
Yeah.
For these cities? Do you see that happening more and more, or?
I think that, you know, in Florida, because of the laws that we have that sort of try to incentivize recycling, and there's goals to be 75%, you know, recyclables now. We could probably spend 30 minutes just talking about how they calculate that at the DEP. But I don't think that we're going to see recycling going away. I think that, you know, there are going to be decisions that, you know, each municipality is going to need to make in terms of whether, because it is somewhat costly to still have side stream and pull that out. And then really, the biggest cost is going to be just processing the recyclables. Because up until this point, the value that you would get from the sale of recyclables would more than offset the cost of those contractors to go through and sort and bail, you know, the recyclable so that they can sell them.
Yeah.
So we kind of lost the value on the market on the sale side. And so what that's done is it's forcing all these contracts to, you know, raise their rates or no longer provide revenues. But even still, I think, you know, the cost of disposal right now, it's still attractive. So we'll have to see, you know, in the next year or two, as these contracts come out, how much more they're going to be raised by. But outside of the state of Florida, yes, I think that you will, there are stories of, you know, communities that are sending, you know, more waste to the waste, to a waste and energy facility, or just directly into a landfill, because they, you know, just don't have an offtake for the recovered materials.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, thank you for that information. And I want to just clarify that I heard you correctly. Does it cost us more to recycle than it does if we just burned all that stuff?
Well, I can't speak, I can't answer that question, because I think that it depends on the specific contract that a municipality has for recycling processing. But it's my understanding for some of the clients that I work with, that the contractors or in communication with them have indicated that their costs might be, you know, let's say about $60 to $80 to process it, you know, per ton. And, you know, the market rate for sale of recoverables might be around $60 to $80 now. So it used to be maybe $100 a ton a few years ago, and now it's gone down pretty substantially. So, you know, it's more of a break-even proposition now.
Well, that's better news than I would have expected, because I was afraid it would be a loss.
Yeah.
It may be. I mean, each community is specific and unique, and so that's why I said I can't really, but I do want to try to attempt to answer your question, so.
Well, I'm just kind of curious if there's an average countywide, because just yesterday, I heard that statement that it cost us more to recycle than it would if we just burned everything. And I thought, well, that's odd. That's not what I thought. I'm so careful to make sure so-and-so things go in the recycling bin and garbage goes in the garbage and.
I think, I think you could potentially argue, you know, landfilling is the least expensive means of disposal for, you know, for some. So, you know, it just kind of, you know. But, you know, I think here in this county, land, I think it dovetailed very nicely with the last agenda item, you know, land is at a premium here. And we want to preserve the landfill capacity for use only for the ash. We don't want to, and we want to keep that as long as we can, so that way we don't have to send the waste out of county, which would be a much higher cost to the residents. So we want to, you know, to the extent that you can encourage recycling within this community, we would probably, you know, recommend that, because that's going to extend the life of your landfill.
It seems like we carry more and more, or not more and more, it's probably too strong of a word, but interest in having a central facility in the county that deals with that recycling, which to Commissioner Long's question of when we, if that were to happen and these contracts were to kind of roll over and they came to a facility like this, they'd have to make the decision.
Yeah.
Do we, do we go ahead and burn? Do we put it there, or do we try to sell it, kind of thing? So do you see that happening around, where counties are taking over that operation as contracts come up and are less acceptable or less?
It's still a fairly new development. And the contracts that a lot of counties have entered into might be, you know, five years or more. And so we're, you know, I think, from my perspective, you know, we're still recycling, we're still trying to recycle for the folks that we're working with. But I can't comment to the entire state and all the.
But no, no trends that are definitely going in one way or another right now?
I think there's a lot of analysis being done.
Yeah, I think that's a great answer.
Anyone else at this point?
Any other questions? This is a little infographic. It shows the waste energy facility and the landfill for the county, and some information about what's being processed at the facility. Some of the information I already shared with you earlier in the presentation.
The general where it says no TRP, that's, TRP is no?
TRP stands for Technical Recovery Plan.
Just conclude.
What does the acronym TRP mean? What's that?
Yeah, sorry. The comment in the general box where it says fiscal year 19 operating expenses equals 64 million, it says no TRP in there because.
What does TRP stand for?
It stands for Technical Recovery Plan or Program.
That's your capital investment that's being made into the waste energy.
Okay.
So it's, you have higher operating expenses in fiscal year 19, but they won't be recurring past the TRP. So just for information, we wanted to exclude that for the infographic.
And the majority of the expense is 60% because it's contracted operations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot, in most counties that, you know, operate solid waste, a lot of it is contracted disposal, contracted operations for disposal.
So most of them do contract? Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the folks out at the, at the site. They gave me a tour last Friday, and it was really, really good. A lot of things have changed since the last tour I had about eight, nine years ago. And so thank you all. They were very great hosts, and we learned a lot, so thank you.
Paul?
Again, we'll be bringing this back to you on March 12th for a public hearing. Your same presentation will be available. The recommendations report is being forwarded to you, I think, as we speak. And then there, any other information would be tied to that, but that's the two biggest pieces of information. And we'll get, make sure that the cities and municipalities know about the public hearing, so no surprises to anyone.
Excellent. Commissioner?
Yeah, I think in a perfect world, it would have been, you know, been nice to, and maybe they did, okay, so I'm not saying this, the question mark, to give our municipalities a little more heads up that this was coming. But perhaps over the last three or four years in our, in this committee that you're talking about that gets together, that has been being discussed, is that?
It's been discussed hard for probably the last five or six years, is my understanding. I mean, I've only been down there for two years or so. Last year, there was going to be a recommendation being made, but they wanted to wait, I think, till we saw if there was any more movement on the power purchase agreement.
Okay.
And then we were also moving forward with the master plan. So the recommendation was just hold off for that year, review again, and then this is what is in front of you today. So the cities have been reviewing and seeing this.
One of the, one of the questions is whether the representatives that are on the committee are informing the municipalities back. And so we had that conversation at the city managers' meeting, and there's, there can be a level of improvement in that communication also.
Yeah. It's a big, but yeah, that's, I'm glad you clarified that, Paul, because that's the one thing you'd want to try to do a better job of. But maybe we are doing a good job in that area. It's not getting through, so.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great presentation. I just wanted to clarify, because it didn't sink in, the 225 is an annual cost, not a monthly cost?
Correct.
For residential.
The impact to a, to a household.
At 18.25.
Okay. And you're going to bring us back the info for commercial at different levels? What the commercial impact is?
It's best, I think they're going to find it difficult to do that, just because each commercial use would differ. But maybe there's some. Picking at certain kind of industry out.
Standard dumpster.
Just some kind of proxy of what that equates to for commercial. And this is all based on a 30-year life?
Of the.
The landfill?
Well, the landfill's got an 85-year life.
So when you talk about landfill closure and that fund that you're building up, that's with an 80-year window?
Well, our forecast only went to 20, only went out 30 years. And if I can, I think I can answer this question a little bit better for you. The liability, the cost, estimated cost for closure, based on the amount of landfill that we've actually used, is represented as a cost by the mountain graph in the background. So, for example, today, we have about a $40 million liability. If we could partially close the landfill today, for example, we'd have a cost of roughly $40 million to try to put it into simple, simple terms. And as we utilize that landfill and as the inflation and the cost of closure increases, we're forecasting that by the end to be around $160 million. So.
Of the landfill we've used to that point?
To that point, right.
Okay.
And with this plan, what we're forecasting is that if you set aside these small purple annual transfers, and we build that into the plan, that by the end of this 30-year forecast, theoretically, we should be able to fund 100% of just the closure piece. There's still that long-term care piece, but as Paul mentioned, the landfill's going to last through 2085 ideally, so.
2103.
Okay, yeah, 2103 ideally, sorry. Did the math wrong. But 2103, but, so we wouldn't even incur that long-term care cost until all of the site was closed. So that's why we haven't hit that all the way up to the top line.
Great, that answers the question. Thank you.
Question real quick.
Yes.
And that capacity payment, remember, which you were talking about, if it's not renegotiated, that you're going to take what we have now and spread it out?
Yes.
What's that timeframe to spread it out over, or your recommendation?
Yeah.
I think it's four.
Yeah, this, this chart here kind of gives you an idea with the 6% annual rate increases. You can kind of see that the delta between the top-line bars, which represent the total expenditures, and the, and the revenues down here, that differential is being funded from cash reserves. And it allows you for a number of years to phase in the rate increase and keep the impact to your residents very low over a long period of time. And that's because we are getting a lot of capacity payments through 2025 above what our costs are going to be.
And then you're, but that spread is in that whole timeframe?
Yes.
You're recommending spreading that out?
I think what I'm hearing you ask, Commissioner, is if we're going to renegotiate the power purchase agreement, how long are we looking to squeeze those payments out?
Yeah, that would be the second question. But the first question is if we don't do anything, and we get all of these deposits upfront, how, how far do you recommend spreading what we have?
I don't think he answered it.
That's what he answered. But, yeah, I would assume that if we do the other, we're going to get less money, but spread out further.
Right.
A year yearly. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. No more questions? What a complicated financial scenario this all is. But thank you for all of your work and for being very conservative in your approach. We always appreciate that here at Pinellas County. And Mr. Burton, is there anything further?
That's all we have.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all. We are adjourned.